Well, that's part-
You don't have the marketing issues of having corner lots?
Correct, which is very important.
They can be hard because of different reasons. Some people like corner lots. I personally don't mind the one I'm on. So, for me, I'm gonna make a motion on this. You guys will just listen for that. And my motion would be to deny the discontinuance of the road and replating of the subdivision. This would be for the Fox Highlands replat that was requested. And you guys can ask questions or comments or second if you'd like.
My motion is to deny-
Deny their request, right.
Could I add that we allow the continued use of lot twenty-seven?
Do that as a separate one.
I'll second your motion.
A second's been given, but there's still time for questions and comments?
I'd like to see lot twenty-seven come back to the planning commission.
We're not on that one yet, Mark.
I know.
There's no other questions or comments. So, a motion was made to deny the request for the concept plan to redraft and have a discontinuance of the road. So, that was replating the subdivision discontinuance of High Point Lane. So, the motion has been made to deny. It's been given a second. I don't hear any other questions or comments, so let's go forward with our vote on that. All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. So, Mark, you had a comment about lot twenty-seven?
Yeah, I'd like to see it come back to the planning commission. So, since it expired, I'd like to see it again.
Instead of just extending it, you'd rather have it come back?
Correct. Just take a more look at it, because I don't remember exactly what it looks like. And since the times elapsed, I'd like to see it brought back.
Do you think it needs to be brought all the way back? Or can we get you some educational material and we just can consider that at our next meeting?
They will be bringing the plat back to eventually, because the plat actually has expired. They are planning to- They are allowed to, if you extend the special exception for the planning development, are allowed to build one new place on the property. Before they can build more, they would have to actually reforge the plat. The plat is expired, so they know they have to come back to replat that lot. In addition, they are waiting to find out how the sale of the first duplex goes to figure out some minor revisions to the condo plat. So, they already were planning coming back to the planning commission for, basically, come back to replat of that area. So, you will be seeing that again.
Do they need a special use to be extended just for that one unit?
No, just your approval to extend the special exception that already exists there is enough. Once they pull that building from it, which they plan to do, then the special exception for planning development will be active. And then they won't have any more issues with it. It's just the initial first building from it that needs to be-
Does that suffice what your concerns are?
I don't remember what the setback was along- I know there was a private, a private road in there.
Yes.
But along Betsy's Rodeo Drive and Ridgeline Drive and Crestfield Way, I don't remember what the setback was.
So, I know that Kelly's got that information pretty handy. I just asked for it myself, so.
I don't recall at the time, maybe, but I want to say it was around twenty-five feet. But I don't recall exactly what it was.
If we were able to pull that up tonight, would you want to look at that tonight or wait?
I'd like to wait until next month. I don't see a big issue waiting another month, since they waited eight.
Oh, it's fine to be in the ground. It'd be in the ground already if it wouldn't rain. It's a duty of trying to make the fall for rain.
I guess I have faith in our previous kick at the cat on this. And maybe it wasn't great, but to me, in the spirit of, I mean, on the one hand, we're saying no to something they're asking us to do. On the other hand, then we're saying no to something that we already said yes to. Or at least not yet, not necessarily. I'm not sure. I don't have a problem going with our existing planning.
I'd agree with you, Jim. That since they have to come back after building just one, just to have it, to go forward with any others and have come back to us with a plat, then I'd be okay with it as well. I know that's different from your feelings, Mark, but that's where I'm at. Anybody else have comments or questions?
I agree with you.
Well, anybody want to make a motion for that, so we can make it official?
I'll make a motion to allow the special exception to be renewed. So that they can build their-
And this is for the Fox Highlands PUD on lot twenty-seven?
On lot twenty-seven.
Okay. Jim Cotter's given a second. Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any, so we should go forward with the vote. All in favor to extend the special exception permit for lot twenty-seven, Fox Highlands? Say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no? Motion carries. And that moves us on from six E to six F. Consider Discuss Act on Resolution twenty-eighteen, a variance for proposed Spring Road subdivision regarding conservation subdivision design. The parcel is as stated in the agenda. So, this was brought to us last month. This is looking for some action this time around, so. What do you have for us, Michael?
This evening, we did see this concept plan last month. Part of the main issue with it, here is the property. So, this is Spring Road, North Road here. The properties in red are the proposed development areas. They are looking for a variance on two fronts here. The first is, because this is outside the sanitary district, our subdivision ordinance requires that the property be developed through the conservation design subdivision requirements. They are seeking relief from that section and prefer to develop the property under the old plating requirements of the subdivision ordinance. The second item that they are looking for is the proposed road. It was a long cul-de-sac of about twelve hundred forty-five feet. The subdivision ordinance restricts that to a max of six hundred feet. One of the concerns that staff did have with the previous, with the plan was just the length of the road, really mainly for emergency vehicles and how do you get them in there. Obviously, the road can be designed to get emergency vehicles in there, to get the necessary water relief in there. They're really, the property's landlocked. There's really no way for the road to go anywhere else except to get it in cul-de-sac. But those are the two areas that are requesting the- The evidence required for a variance are identified in the staff report. There are three items that must be met, at least in the opinion of the planning commission. And ultimately, this will be forwarded to the town board for final approval. So, depending on whether or not the planning commission feels the requests meet the evidence for granting a variance, you are either able to recommend approval or denial of Resolution twenty-eighteen, which is in regards to the conservation design request, and Resolution twenty-one-eighteen, which is in regards to the six hundred foot, I'm seeing six hundred foot maximum cul-de-sac request. I believe the developer is here this evening if you do have questions. And again, this would be a recommendation to the town board on the two items.
So, questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny items for variance. If it would change anything from our conservation subdivision cul-de-sac. Last one.
Is that for, we do have two separate resolutions, so-
Yes, both of them, sir.
And just for clarification, this appears that there may be some confusion. So, the concept plot that was presented last month was designed under a conventional subdivision process. Code identifies that given the location of it requires a conservation by design. They are asking for relief of the conservation design. So, if they had to go back and replat it, what you saw last month wouldn't be relevant at all. So, what they're asking for is complete relief under that section of code. And that the concept that you saw would then be somewhat pertinent. Obviously, there might be some modifications or tweaks based on the concepts that you reviewed, but it would still be compliant with the conventional subdivision section of the code. Would you be willing to separate from the-
I would be. I will start with Resolution twenty-eighteen. And I would ask that we deny that.
I'll second that.
Let's just do, let's just do one at a time, Greg. So, Greg's made a motion to deny the Resolution twenty-eighteen, and Mark's given a second on that. Are there questions or comments on this?
Well, we have a subdivision ordinance in place, and I think we should follow. There's reasons why we want conservation subdivisions outside the sanitary district. And I think we should adhere to that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I would encourage the developer that if he were, if setting the road point aside, if they would like to talk to the town, I'm sure the town staff, myself included, would be willing to help take a look at what possible designs they could do under conservation subdivision, so not objecting to the idea of the development there. I agree with you, Jim.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
If I can talk, that's fine. If I can't, I'll-
I'll allow it, but I need you to come up here to the podium if you're gonna talk.
Just a little confused, because I think, I thought we had done that. Yeah, I thought we had talked to the town about what alternatives were there. It wasn't take it or leave it. Isn't that true?
So, just again, for clarification, the motion is to deny a variance request? Doesn't mean that development can't happen-
Correct.
-still can happen, and we just have to meet the conservation design subdivision section of the code. What's proposed now-
But you agreed with us.
... is the section laid out tonight.
And that's probably so vague, it's not even enforceable.
Which section?
The conservation subdivision.
I don't know that getting into a disagreement about the code on the floor of the planning commission is the best use of time, but-
Do you have any comments that are specific to any hardships for going to a conservation subdivision, which is part of our ordinance? Hearing no. So, there's a motion that's on the table. It's been given a second. This is a motion to deny Resolution twenty-eighteen. Any other questions or comments? I'm not hearing any, so we're gonna have the planning commission go forward with their vote. All in favor of the motion as stated to deny Resolution twenty-eighteen? Should state so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no?
I'm just telling you because I wasn't here last time, so I don't know.
Okay. Motion still carries, so that's a five to zero. But Jim is staining from this. So, a motion carries for what was six F, aye? And then we had a six F two would be a Resolution twenty-one-eighteen asking for a variance for the Spring Road subdivision regarding cul-de-sac length.
Now, do we need to take action on this one?
Well, if the developer chooses to afford with development and comply with the subdivision, with the conservation design subdivision, they're still gonna need that, that variance. They're still gonna need to request the variance, because in their opinion, there's really no other way to develop the property unless they can have that longer road in their mind.
So, yes, I think we should go forward with this, Mark, so.
Well, I thought maybe if they came back with a plat, a concept that-
Had it shorter?
That's shorter.
So, you could be suggesting to table this?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Mark's given the motion to table, item six F two. Any other comments or questions?
Another question for the developer. I don't know if I didn't notice it, but the- On the southern side, southern edge, edge to the current property, a line up with what looks to be a shared driveway. We talked to the landowners who are sharing that driveway to see if that could become a, that your road could intersect with their driveway and had that driveway be part of the town road? Is that what you're suggesting? When that comes-
Correct.
Yeah, and come on out to North Road. Is that something that you've talked to them about? That seems very attractive to me.
Party that has a property on North Road is not desired to have more access to their property.
And I think the roads would be too close, your proposed road with Jackie Court.
I would still prefer that for the two months, but-
Okay, so any other questions or comments? We do have a motion that's been presented with a second from Jim Eckert. Any other questions or comments? All right, the motion was made to table this. All in favor to table, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion to table is approved. So, this will be moved to a future meeting, once the developer looks at how they want to develop this property. That takes us to six G. Consider Discuss Act on Resolution twenty-two eighteen, concept plan for variance for proposed Mayflower Drive subdivision regarding a conservation subdivision design.
Thank you. Again, similar request from the previous one. This is in regards to the length or the conservation subdivision requirements. Again, this property falls outside of the sanitary district. And per ordinance requirements, it would be required to be a conservation subdivision.
I'll make a motion to deny to the town board of Resolution twenty-two eighteen for the same reasons as stated in the previous. It lies without, or outside the sanitary district. You should comply.
Someone have a second for Mark?
I will second that, and I also ask a question. With regard, that's a neighborhood E, according to our comp plan. And is that, is that area in the planned sewer service area?
Let me, it is not, it's not even within the twenty-thirty area.
Okay, okay.
It could be, as they are planning on doing the map amendments later next year. So, there's certainly a possibility, but at this point, that is not.
And I'll second what that says.
Okay, motion's given with a second. This is to deny Resolution twenty-two eighteen, a concept plan for variance for proposed Mayflower Drive subdivision. Any other questions or comments? Since there are none, let's go forward with our vote. Once again, this is to deny Resolution twenty-two eighteen. All in favor to deny, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two eighteen is denied by the planning commission. We can go on to six H. Consider Discuss Act on TID Design Drive Concept. So, this is Michael's Design Drive extension, right? The towns, I should say.
I will turn it over to Joel as he compares the report and will explain what's going on in his property.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, members of the planning commission. I'm gonna just kind of go through a couple of things here real quick. Okay, in your packet, you had indicated there was a technical memorandum that was included from Nick Van De Heij from McMahon that outlined the overall planning area for our tax incremental finance district number one. Within that packet is obviously a diagram of our, of our area of planning interest. The tax incremental finance district is highlighted here in the black bordered boundary with the black hash mark area. Our primary focus in this planning area was everything south of fifteen, just past where Design Drive is. The TID also extends beyond that area, but we're primarily focused in these undeveloped areas between Highway fifteen, GV, and County Road CB and Mayflower Road. Couple of things that want to point out as part of the planning effort is we looked at a couple of things from a stormwater and wetland consideration. We looked at the overall drainage watershed or drainage area, and that extends out into the existing Greenville Business Park. Much of that water is flowing to the east. So, it's, part of the planning effort was to determine if there was an opportunity to construct some regional stormwater facilities for water quality purposes. In addition to that, we looked at stormwater planning within the TID boundaries and beyond, and also some wetland delineation information there. What we found out in our planning efforts are some, both delineated wetlands and also areas that we felt were potential wetlands. We did not conduct full delineations of all the properties within our planning area, primarily because of two things. One, they were either outside the TID. Or two, the landowners were not interested in participating or assisting us in that delineation. But we did complete all the areas within the TID boundaries. The areas to the south, outside the TID boundaries, we only did partial delineations for those properties. And that's included in that packet. Beyond that, we also looked at navigability of streams and floodway and flood fringe areas to see how they would impact the TID area as well as the areas to the south. And that's included in there as figure three in the packet. And then from there, if you get to the next page in the packet, you'll see several concepts. And I apologize, but based on the size and scope of the concept plans, you have to kind of turn your page, rotate it one, one turn. So, now we're facing north, going to the, to the right of the screen here, south to the left. So, if I were to flip that, you'd see that. What this, what these concepts are reviewing are where we can locate potential regional stormwater facilities, not only to accommodate development within the TID boundaries, but also to accommodate water quality requirements for the existing Greenville Business Park. We're trying to kind of more or less kill two birds with one stone in that process. In addition to that, the plan outlines several concepts for street layouts of primary concern to us from a staff perspective and our consultant and the landowners was the idea or the notion of creating Design Drive, an extension of Design Drive, through the TID boundaries. It's going to be required that we have some type of east-west connection between County Road CB and Mayflower Road. So, it was important to design that. Beyond that, you'll see a few streets that connect to that future Design Drive, running a north-south grid. The intent there is to just kind of show possibilities of layouts, but not set anything necessarily in stone. And that's for two reasons. One, obviously, the landowners are all private landowners held in trust. So, it's really going to be dictated by them on how they want to develop their property. But then two, also as potential and future development comes into play, we want to be able to be scalable and flexible based on the demand for that development. We've had interest for much larger lot sizes, fifty, sixty, seventy-five acre lots. If we had a mapped road or a constructed road, we would limit our ability to have those, those lot makeups. So, we wanted to show it in concept, just to show the possibility of what, what if, but nothing set particularly in stone. So, this is concept one. Again, obviously, on the right of the screen is to the north. This line here is County Road CB. If I'm in over here, Greenville Drive or County Road GV is running here. We have Mayflower Road. The primary connection again is to extend Design Drive east to west. One of our concepts had it trying to connect to Sandra, Sandra Court or Drive on the other side of Mayflower, but obviously, creating that connection there. In talking with county highway officials, County Road CB, County Road GV, both controlled access highways, so direct access from those roads into the interior lots for development would be limited. There is, there are some opportunities, but it'd be rather scaled back based on the nature of the business. Large enterprises, things of that nature, would be required to access off a local road like an extended Design Drive. This again, kind of shows it in a larger blown-up viewpoint. Again, you could see the, see the navigability of the streams, the regional ponds, and the street grid layout for that particular development. Again, these ponds are kind of attempted to fall within a watershed, if you will, or a drainage area. So, they've been located to reflect that. Concept two, again, kind of the same premise. But in this particular concept, what we tried to do is locate all the regional stormwater facilities relatively close to each other. We wanted to have that concept to show to our county airport officials to determine if that would be allowable within the airport zone or if they needed to be separate to allow for better wildlife mitigation efforts. Again, this is just the larger overall vision of that area. Again, you can see those ponds are more in line with each other within the development planning area. Beyond that, after those concepts were reviewed with staff, we invited the, the members of the, of the ownership group, interest groups for the development area into some meetings. We met with them in the fall of twenty-seventeen and also early twenty-eighteen. From there, it was determined that the primary emphasis should be on the extension of Design Drive and that further planning and delineation needed to occur to affect that. And so, we employed our engineer at McMahon to begin that process. And then from there, we presented several additional concepts, although scaled down to reflect that desired output. So, first, we put together a typical section. This would model the Design Drive section that is on the west of the road, although it would be an urbanized section. So, it would have its standard twelve-foot travel lanes. It would have sixty, or excuse me, eighty feet of right-of-way within the area. And so, you can see that it's just a single two, a single two-lane road through, through the development area. This intention, the intent of this diagram was just to show how the intersections would be constructed at CB. Again, we will be planning to forward this on to county highway officials to get concurrence on that. And then we get into the revised concepts, if you will, of, of the Design Drive extension. We had three original concepts that we presented to the landowners and then requested feedback from them. The first concept, again, has Design Drive extending from, from CB, routing up into the TID area property, and then eventually meandering to the south to connect up to Sandra Drive. The stormwater pond that would service not only Design Drive, but the northern half of the, the planning area within the dotted line, that watershed would be to the north of that, that area. The primary concern for this particular concept was that it was going to limit these individual property owners' ability to develop their property, because they would not have a significant amount of direct access on Design Drive. This is the next concept, although it kind of creates a similar nature. Again, extending from CB and then meandering to the south to connect to Sandra. Because of the radius in the road, obviously, it does open up some opportunities for development in that eastern property, although it does create other conditions. If you look at this packet, there's two other property owners to the south there. And so, there would have to be some kind of land exchanges and things of that nature. And that would create some, some challenges from a acquisition standpoint. Concept three basically was just a straight shot. Let's punch it in at Design Drive, run it up to the north, so it's completely within the TID boundaries, and then run it straight across, not caring or concerning about the connection to Sandra. In this case, again, that eastern property owner, the Coonan family, would have no direct access off Design Drive. And so, that would limit that ability. In addition to that, that road would terminate and dead-end right at a driveway into a single-family home on that edge. So, from a planning perspective, we didn't fully appreciate that plan either. So, ultimately, what, what came out of it is we talked to the, all the property owners, received feedback from them. For the most part, they were supportive of the idea or had continued support of the idea of continuing Design Drive. The desire was from the Schlimms to obviously try to make it as accessible as they possibly could into their property, which is the northern western section. The Urmers are the property owners to the south of the Design Drive. They are not in the TID boundaries. So, they, although supportive of the project and the opportunity that it may create for them, feel that they would prefer it have the least amount of impact, immediate impact to them as part of the development. So, we tried to push Design Drive as far north as we possibly could. And then the Coonans' desire, obviously, was to try to get as much access as they possibly could from Design Drive into their development. So, you can see this meander up to the north. The one challenge, again, obviously, is we're not connecting through a full intersection at Sandra. But in looking at the comprehensive plan for the Town of Grand Shute, this area here is zoned for multifamily. And so, and the Coonans' act- And so, and the Coonans actually own this property as well. So that would allow an intersection to be placed at Mayflower and provide interior opportunity for the, them to develop their property in Grand Shute. So we feel like we've taken into account many of the landowners' interest. I should note that although there are four individual property owners that we are working with, they are all made up of trusts. And some of these trusts have four, five, six, seven members in them, and they don't always necessarily agree with themselves either. So it's been challenging to get a full consensus, but we feel like from a, from a conceptual standpoint, that this concept for this final design achieves the goal and the intent of not only the property owners on opening up the interior of the TID, but meets good planning efforts for the town going forward. So with that, we would like your consent, if you will, on these conceptual plans. We are planning on presenting this to the town board. If these are approvable for the planning commission and town board, ultimately, we'll meet with the property owners again, give them an overview of the final concept, and then at that point, we'll begin the process of actually officially mapping the road, and then at some point, receiving consent to begin the actual design work so that in the event a development were to come about, we would be prepared and shovel-ready to begin the project.
Are you looking for a motion on a particular concept or just the concepts in general that just have been?
Just concepts in general. If you feel strongly about one, maybe four is definitely not your one, then by all means, let us know. A recommendation would be preferable, but it isn't necessary.
My only concerns would be about this last one with the, I understand the Coonan family wanting to have access into their property. Future to the south, I'm wondering how that property that would be just south of the proposed pond would be accessed if it couldn't come off of Mayflower? Because you have a wetlands that's in between and just some concerns about.
And Mayflower is a local road, so you would be able to get access off of Mayflower.
All right, that answers my question. Okay. Any other questions, comments for Joel, or is there a motion?
How much development does this pool, is your pools take? We've had some where other places were to, when, when the manufacturing, they're, they're either doing expansion of their building, but they're talking about, well, they have to keep adding, adding, adding. I wonder if it would be smarter just to build ponds as big as possible, you know, like assuming maximum development versus only ten years you have to add on, or ten, you know, ten more years you have to add, it will, it will separate.
Sure.
What we would typically do and what we've done in the planning exercises, we've look in, looked at the entire land area and based on our current zoning code, what the maximum lot coverage would be allowable under that zoning district, and then size the pond based on the value, that, that amount of impervious service. Correct.
Joel, this is kind of a little bit off the wall. But first of all, I like, I like, I like the connection to Sandra Drive, the version of design drive. But with regard to the, the stormwater planning, is there, I don't know if this is possible or even desirable, but like in your, your figure seven where the ponds are all in sequence, or figure six, what do you think? I notice as I drive around that, that some developments like around by Thriven and Havana and Green Bay and other places, they try to create some kind of a walkway or something for employees to get outside, take a walk, grab lunch, or whatever. And I don't know if we could kill a couple of birds with one stone by trying to create some kind of linear, linear trail system with these stormwater ponds or the, the waterways that are through there to help add an amenity to the, the development for the employees as well as create stormwater at the same time.
Certainly could be included as part of our future concept. So even though we would be making modifications from this original concept.
Yeah.
This pond here would effectively be located here. The road would meander up, up to about this point. And then we could still create these lineal pond features, if you will, on what would be more of the eastern half of the planning area, and then create some kind of interior trail network. There are some navigable streams, obviously, and some other wetland areas there that may not be, or would have to be avoided as part of the development. So those would be good opportunities to line some type of trail network or something to that effect.
I guess I'd encourage, I don't know if our parks department would get involved in it all, but if we could do that. I see people hold a highball walking and, and some places that would be a danger for people.
The other concept. Either way, just encouraging a, a trail system around the ponds.
Yeah, right, right.
The other concept that, that we did not address either, that obviously is extended on what would be more the western half of design drive west of CB, there is a trail by Pebble Ridge Park. We did not include that in, as part of the original typical section, but if it's desired, we can certainly add that to that item.
Well, I would encourage that we at least put bike lanes or something in for people.
Yeah.
Especially since we have an extra lot for CB, there may be people that want to try to bike to work also.
Yep. Yeah, definitely, it's already been talked about in part of our vision for Greenville that we just discussed last Friday. Watch the, watch the blog this week, and you'll see some new things out there, yeah.
Well, I do like the headlines of the Sandra, but I also don't find the one that, the last one that you showed.
One and four. John, do you need to make a comment, John?
So, one would, one would be, Jim Eckert remembers. I don't know if anybody else will, but when we have Dave Mitchell helping with the land use planning, one of the things we wanted to do that I think might be important for what woodlots are there, we have, we don't have ideas how much will survive. But when we're putting in streets, I think we should plan for coverage and the traffic of animals and the wildlife that will still remain when that land is developed so that it doesn't promote, present any more road issues than necessary for the wildlife or traffic issues for the people that are out there. I do think that the time has arrived that those things should be incorporated in planning.
Yeah, second comment?
Yes, and that is, when I look at general John pond and the airport overlay, are we sure that we can do much with the stormwater? Or are we going to have to do coverage? Or before we even plan some of these ponds, I have a hunch, Joel, that we've already okayed some of the woods to county.
Yeah, the only, the only, we have met with county zoning officials. The only thing that we would need to get concurrence on at this point is just the wildlife mitigation performance that we, that would be required to do stormwater.
They're bound to be required.
Well, they will be, yeah. Just a matter of, as I mentioned before, if we create this kind of lineal nature of the ponds where we have three ponds in sequential order, does that attract wildlife more than individual ponds separated by a few acres? And, and so they, they needed to review that with Chip Lovell, who's their, their person at the airport that reviews these wildlife mitigation practices. So we haven't gotten there yet, but we do recognize that we would need to make those requests.
So are you looking for a motion over this, correcting a vote?
If you're comfortable with that. If you're not, then we can keep working towards a different concept.
I'd be willing to make the motion to go forward with the TID design drive concepts that you have. I think one and four are the preference from what we've seen and heard, but concepts are good and you should go forward, in my opinion. I'll make that motion. Any other questions or comments? Let's vote on this. Motion was made to, for the town staff to go forward with their concepts for design drive in the TID district. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Six H is approved to go forward. Six I, well number five, consider discuss act on resolution sixteen eighteen, site plan for well number five. I'm gonna make a motion to approve resolution sixteen eighteen. Yeah, sorry, I'm right. Jim Cotter's given a second. Is there questions or comments? Don't hesitate to ask, just because I made a motion right away.
You went so quick, I wasn't sure which one we were hearing.
Yep, sixteen eighteen. This is the site plan. All right, I'm not hearing any questions or comments, but I want to make sure there aren't any, so I'm gonna take a look to the left. We're good there, look to the right. All right, we're all good to go forward. All in favor of the motion as stated to approve resolution sixteen eighteen, site plan for well number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Resolution sixteen eighteen is approved. And so that moves us down to the public hearing and consider discuss act on resolution seventeen eighteen. This is a special exception for well number five. So public hearing for this is now open. Anybody wishing to speak, please just raise your hand or stand, make some type of signal. I'm not seeing any. I'll make a motion to close public hearing. Second's given by Leanne. All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Public hearing portion's closed. So the planning commission, do you have a motion or any questions or comments? So resolution seventeen eighteen is a special exception for well number five. Any special comments on that, Michael? Joel? Greg's given the motion to approve, and I'll second. Any other questions or comments? Once again, I'm not hearing any, so let's go forward with our vote. Motion's been made to approve resolution seventeen eighteen, special exception for well number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. That would be six I two is approved, and six J, bicycle and pedestrian plan, ad hoc committee.
Thank you. So our staff has met with East Central regarding the council plan update as well as the bicycle and pedestrian plan that is going along with that project. We are looking to create an ad hoc committee of staff and other agencies involved with that, as well as looking for residents that they'd be able to be on that. We'd also like to have a volunteer from the planning commission that'd be interested in sitting on that committee. All right.
All right, Jim Eckert. All right. That takes us down to town chairman, community and economic development director update.
Um, keep it short. We've got a lot going on, as you see from the agenda, and a lot more projects and things that'll be coming before you. Got a lot of activity, so it's good to see you all building, construction, and development capable guys.
Okay, that's what you have. I just have a couple of things in here. Last Friday, the, the town board and some of the department heads from the town staff met. We did go through a mission statement, our vision, and are working on some strategies that the town can really use as their focal point on what projects and what, what we're gonna work on. So more to come on that. I did joke about a blog, but it really wasn't a joke. There is a blog out there that Joel and I just started in means of additional communications. So if you're interested in seeing what those are, just, just watch this week. I think Joel's ready to, to post something once I give him the green light on it. Maybe he already has for what we worked on last Friday. So it was a really good meeting, and if you guys are interested in sitting in.
Via the website or how do we access?
Yep, the website, yep. And if you have a Facebook account or anything, Joel's been posting links out there for it. So just trying to open up communications on a more regular basis. We've got a quarterly newsletter that really, you can't get enough information in there. So we'd like to allow people other opportunities of what's actually going on within the town. So that's there. And then I have asked Michael, because of all the different developments that we've got going on in town, to give some type of status and, and maybe on a regular basis, we'll see how things go of how many development lots, like within each of our developments, how many lots do we have that are proposed or planning? How many are already in the construction phase, going through putting in infrastructure and utilities? How many are available, you know, that type, those different statuses? And actually, I, I did copy Todd Tim from the school district on that, and the school district is going through something further out in this year, a similar type of study. So we're gonna share information as best we can along those, those paths. Any questions on that?
If I can add, it's really funny you mentioned that because I was looking up our conservation subdivision ordinance, and as part of the subdivision ordinance, there's two twenty, two seventy dash seventy-seven. Administration says that we were supposed to have an annual report, number of flats, lots and everything.
I knew there was.
Am I having those asked? But I think we missed the last year, so that would be perfect to have to get.
Michael, I knew there was a reason why I asked you for that. Now, now I've got it, so I appreciate it.
It's already, it's already written in the code.
That's all I have for announcements, is anybody wanting to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, motion's been made to adjourn in a second. Before we do, the next meeting is July twenty-third, five thirty PM, right here. Since the motion's been made to adjourn with a second, I am gonna go forward with the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned at seven fifteen PM. Yeah, Hortonville, right? Oh, we've got one too. Hortonville's still on this weekend.
But you know, we, we emailed you about like, we used to do it up, but then they took.